I've always been afraid this phone's gonna ring during the meeting.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for reminding me. I gotta turn mine.
I'll mute for a second.
I'd go say Ben just mentioned about a nice house. I'm gonna mention to Ben about a nice snowman and I thought it was your front yard. It's your neighbors. And it looked how nice that snowman looked. Here it's an artificial one. Now I realize why it was looking so nice.
That's Mark and Dorothy Steinman, so little more experienced than Hudson and Lincoln.
All right, it's 6:45. I'm going to call the committee of the whole meeting for Tiffin City Council, March 1st, 2021 to order. Does anyone have anything for the committee of the whole? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President. Just two requested suspensions this evening. Ordinance 2118 and 21-19. We do have Kathy Kaufman here who can go into details on why she needs those, but it's basically facing deadlines. But Kathy, if you're willing to explain that a little further, I'd appreciate it when I get the rest of this meeting uploaded.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Ornance 2118 is at the request of the auditors. We had a advance in 2017 that was made from general fund to the federal urban paving grant program. And that normally advances are supposed to always be returned to the general fund. Once the project is over, the project was more expensive than we knew it was going to be, and so there was not enough money to return that advance. So it is still on our books as an advance and it needs to be reclassified as a transfer. So this is an accounting measure to make sure that it shows correctly on our books. 21-19 is appropriating $5,368.50 for the Parks Department to put into their budget. This was from East Green where we actually billed them for some spring cleanup and some signage for the East Green. So the Parks Department would like this money put into their 21 budget.
So we got money back from East Green?
Yes.
Ben, you signed those?
Yes, I did, Mr. President. I'd be happy to ask for suspension.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And later on at the proper time, and I'd have to check my notes. I'm just gonna ask Ben and Zach to check their calendars and see if we can schedule a materials equipment meeting for Mayor's request, 21 day four on the street salt. So that'd be later on, I guess.
Councilman Perry?
I'm looking at the resolution 21-6, and that doesn't seem to be the right thing there.
Ian, you wanna?
Yes, I'll explain that. That was received and then asked to change, and then it was, you don't have the latest copy of it. It was emailed to you by Brett Howard earlier today, but that one that was already in your packet, it had not gotten changed by the time you were here. It is the resolution. It is that resolution you actually signed today.
Right. In our packet, it has something to do with ordinance 20-122 with the transfer from the Railroad Safety Escrow Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund.
That's not the one, though. It was changed this morning when Brett.
It was changed. Okay, so the one that I have here is the right one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, you signed the one for the appointment.
Alright, so avoid the one on here. Got it.
Brent has a one reading resolution?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very, very minor. I mean, very. When we get to those four petitions, I've been in Tiffin all my life, and when it comes to North Street and South Street, I have no idea where that alley and those three streets are. And then with the verbiage, it left me in the dark here, so I don't want to be in the dark when we discuss those.
Councilman Leopard? Councilman Leopard?
The department review sheet circulated for those four petitions, and once those are returned, we can set a date for a meeting. I do not foresee setting a date for that meeting until after the 16th of March.
Steve, you're breaking up on us.
Okay, let me switch audio again here.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I wanted to ask Councilman Perkins, is there a good time to have a conversation with you to get you up to speed like on the East Green stuff and other park stuff to give you some basic information?
I'm usually available all day on Wednesdays and Thursdays until probably evening. So if you have any availability, then I'm fine. Other than that, we'll make something work.
Okay, I'll give you a call probably Wednesday. It'll probably work out fine. Okay, thanks.
How's my audio now, Rich?
Good.
I don't know if you were able to hear me, Ken, but we won't have any discussion on those four petitions tonight. We will wait until a department review sheet is returned to the committee, and we will set a meeting date on the 16th of March.
Anything else? The mayor, oh, Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I noticed that the last meeting, that I've got my hand over my heart, but your guys' hands all look like they're going the other direction. Is that a camera thing?
What, when we do the pledge?
Yeah, I don't want people to think I'm not doing.
That's a camera thing.
Because I don't want them to think I don't have my hand over my heart, but I'm opposite a lot of people. Okay, I was just kinda curious.
Settings, you can switch it to like a mirrored view and regular view, so who knows which one is set.
Well, I'm fine with it. I just didn't want people to think I wasn't doing it properly.
The mayor and I sat in on a, I don't know if he wants to talk about it all, but we sat in on a meeting with DSEP last Friday and discussing building another spec building, and there was a developer, JLL, which is a national developer that was represented at the meeting. And it was interesting what he talked about from a national level. Even though we had a terrible year last year in terms of COVID, he said the impact of COVID has had a dramatic impact on manufacturing in a positive way. There are a lot of businesses that have started to move back into the United States, which is creating a huge demand for space. So there's a real demand out there for space. So I think that we're gonna be building another spec building. And I think the timing is gonna be very good on that. And I think this coming year is gonna be, and I was, actually, I was really surprised at how positive his report was about the potential out there for our economy, especially in the manufacturing sector moving ahead. So he sees our community well positioned to take advantage of opportunities. You know, the groundwork's been laid here for us to continue to move ahead and see a lot of positive growth in our community. So you have anything to add, Mayor?
No, I think you covered it quite well. It seems that we're in a very good position right now with this potential spec building to get a very good rate. And we have two different construction companies that are interested in constructing the spec building. So all signs point to hopefully some point this year, we've got another spec building under construction and yet another manufacturer attracted to the community.
This is what, the fourth one we've built? Fourth one or fifth one? I lose track.
Quite a few, but they've all been highly successful.
They've all been, every single one of them is occupied. So it's been a good program. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. On that same note, I don't have the facts or the background, but in Fosteri on 12, going out of Fosteri and away to Fremont there, across from JB Tours and Poet, there's a new building and it looks like a spec building. I don't see any signage or anything like that. So Fosteri might be hedging on a empty building themselves. Just thought I'd share that.
Yeah, I know they've done a couple in the past. I haven't stayed close to their situation, but in fact, they were the first ones to build a spec building. They did it before we did. Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
Yes, one more thing. Just check my note. I signed up for the NCOEC breakfast on Friday, March 5th at 8 o'clock, and they got their business meeting at 8:30, and I got ahold of John DeValti and said some of the city council shared a table last year, and he said they're not sharing tables this year. Just sit where there's an opening. And he wanted me to mention it rest of city council and city administration. If anybody wants to go to that on Friday the 5th at 8:00 or breakfast, get ahold of John DeValti, and there may be openings. So I thought I would share that.
What time is that again? 8:30?
8 o'clock is a breakfast, and 8:30 starts the meeting with Reinecke and Mayor Montz and Click and a host of others.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing as there's no further comment, I'm going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, and we'll get ready to start our regular council meeting. All right, it's now 7 o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for Tiffin City Council. The date is March 1st, 2021. This evening, the invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a prayer I would like to share in honor of the conclusion of Black History Month, which concluded yesterday, as you know. If you would join me. Oh God, you created all people in your image. We thank you for the astonishing variety of races and cultures in this world. Enrich our lives by ever widening circles of friendships and show us your presence in those who differ most from us. Until our knowledge of your love is made perfect in our love for all your children through your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
And if you could, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gillig. I know I ask Clerk Councilman Gillig to call the roll. I'm sorry, Aunt Forrest.
I don't know if my mom's on the meeting.
That's two weeks in a row, Ben. Last week I was calling you Gillum, and now I'm calling. I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a full moon. Okay, Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman Leopard?
Here.
Councilman Perkins?
Here.
Councilman Perry?
Present.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of Tiffin City Council are present. We're now under petitions.
We have four petitions this evening. Petition number 103 by MAAI Leasing LLC to vacate Vicada Street, AKA North Street, in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, running east-west between lots 6 and 10 on the north and lots 11 to 15 on the south, and commencing at the westerly right-of-way line of Elwood Street and terminating at the end of the right-of-way of North Street, also being the southwest corner of Lot 10 and the northwest corner of Lot 11 of Runyon's subdivision.
Petition 103 will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
Petition number 104 by Jeffrey A. Brickner to vacate a 12-foot wide alley in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, running north-south between lots 7 on the east and lot 8 on the west, and commencing with the northerly right-of-way line of Second Avenue and terminating at the southerly right-of-way line of a 12-foot wide east-west alley, also being the northerly lines of lots 7 and 8 in block 19 of Highland First Edition.
Petition 104 will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
Petition number 105 by Rich Seitz to vacate a street, also known as South Street, in the third ward of the city of Tiffin, running north-south between lots 244 to 245 on the west and lots 246 to 255 on the east, all in Cottage Park Edition, and commencing at the southerly right-of-way line of Euclid Avenue and terminating at the end of the right-of-way of South Street, also being the easterly line of the formerly vacated right-of-way of Hopewell Avenue.
Petition 105 will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
Petition number 106 by Rich Seitz to vacate a street, also known as Orchard Street, in the third ward of the city of Tiffin, running north-south between lots 28 to 35 on the west and lot 27 on the east, all in Cottage Park Edition, and commencing at the southerly right-of-way of Euclid Avenue and terminating at the end of the right-of-way of Orchard Street.
Petition 106 will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
That concludes the petition.
Thank you. Did everybody have a, receive a copy of the minutes from our February 16th, 2021 meeting? Hopefully you've all had a chance to review those. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, the minutes without objection will be approved as presented. Committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
I have no report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Do you want to make an announcement?
Yes, I would like to announce a subcommittee meeting of the materials and equipment to discuss. I have it right here. Mayor's request for legislation 21-4. It involves purchasing street salt for the 2022 year and public hearing and any other business that may become before us.
When's that gonna be?
Oh, I would have to get a suggestion from someone. Hi. I don't have a date off the top of my head.
Councilman Gillig?
Councilman Perkins, you said you were off on Wednesdays and Thursdays?
Yes, always.
Very good. Either Wednesday or Thursday would be perfect for me. I can probably meet anytime after 3:30.
Okay, and how about yourself, Zach? After 3:30 or?
Yeah, if you guys want to do Wednesday at maybe like 4 o'clock, would that be okay?
That'd be fine with me. Okay, that was easier than I thought. To answer your question, President, it'd be Wednesday. The, today is 1, 2, 3, and 7. Wednesday, the 10th. Are we talking the 3rd or the 10th?
The 10th, Councilman Jones.
Okay. March the 10th, 2021 at 4:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for helping.
All right, Personal Labor Relations, Councilman Perry?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilman Perkins?
No report this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalk and Sewers, Councilman Leopard? Say again? Thank you. Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Yonatuno?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody see a need for committee of the whole meeting? Council, Mayor Montz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item that I have, and it's really up to council's preference, we did complete a traffic study at several signals within the city, studying several traffic signals. And there are proposed changes at all of the intersections, and I'm not sure since it is scattered throughout the city and thinking through the intersections are almost in every ward. If you prefer to do the committee of the whole, or if you want to send that to a committee such as Street Sidewalk and Sewers or Law and Community Planning, it's really up to your preference. However, we would like to see this move fairly quickly so that any of the changes that we make can be made over the summer so that traffic patterns can take hold before school starts back up in the fall.
All right, Steve, do you want to handle that? Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee?
We can handle that, Mr. President.
Okay. Then I want to forward that to you. Thank you. Anything else, Mayor? Okay, thank you. Just a reminder that we have a joint public hearing planned with the Planning Commission at our next meeting. It'll be at 7:05 on the 15th of March. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss ordinances 21-15, 21-16, and 21-17. Well, now, we're now under reports of the officers. His honor Mayor Aaron D. Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of my favorite things to do as mayor is to honor various groups in the community and individuals. And the month of March is always known as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. So I am going to bring in a few individuals who are going to join us for this meeting. They should be on their way in. I know we have Marta Moore, Superintendent Louis Hurst, and Jenny and Pat Herman who are joining us this evening. There, they're coming in. All right. I thought I brought Lou in. Maybe I hit the wrong button. Let's try this again. Lou should be on his way in now. Here he comes. So we have our proclamation this evening, and it's quite similar to those that we have done in the past, but I'm going to read it for everyone. It's a mayor's proclamation from the city of Tiffin, Ohio, and it states, "Whereas individuals with developmental disabilities, their families, neighbors, and coworkers encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. And whereas the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution. And whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and opportunities offered for citizens with developmental disabilities to live as independently and presently as possible in our community. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for people with disabilities that includes full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Aaron D. Montz, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and recognize that people with developmental disabilities are an integral part of our community. Take time to get to know one, know someone with a disability and what he or she has to offer. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to take time to stand alongside the opportunity center to help improve the lives of persons with disabilities to form strong and diverse communities. This was done under my hand this first day of March in the year of our Lord 2021." I know Marta and Jenny wanted to get a picture of me holding this up and of you on the screen, so I'm gonna do my best to hold this up for them so that Marta and Jenny can get a picture. And I don't know, Marta, Jenny, or Lou, if any of you would like to say any words. The floor is all yours to talk a little bit about Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month here in the city of Tiffin.
Sure, I'm gonna jump in and say, first of all, I just want to say for your time to join us today in celebrating March as Disability Awareness Month. Our theme this month is Senate County Strong. We picked this theme because of all of the challenges with COVID have really illustrated what a strong community we live in with our partnerships with our community partners, which enabled us to virtually, you know, we've had to do a lot of virtual classes and virtual learning, and really instead of people coming into the center as would have been the past, we are doing services throughout the community virtually and through work with Tiffin Public Library, work with Reclaim It, work with different county officials, Gym Yoga, different organizations. Now we're doing virtual classes for our folks, which is really neat to see and has enabled us to continue to add meaningful lives or meaning to people's lives, even though they may not be coming into the center because of COVID. We've also partnered with the Health Department to try to utilize our building to get vaccines available to our community, and literally thousands of people have come through in the last three or four weeks, which has really been incredible to see. You know, one of our nurses was giving a shot, and the lady looked down at the birth certificate or the birth record document, and she was 102 years old. And, you know, so there are older residents, a lot older than I am. I feel old sometimes, but I'm not quite that old. But it's really neat to see. You know, it's been quite the challenges. We had to reshape our services a little bit. But like I said, we couldn't do it without the community and support. Just a little bit about our program. I know you guys have heard me talk before, so I'm not gonna go into too much detail. Just a little bit about our program. I know you guys have heard me talk before, so I'm not going to go into too much detail, but you know, we start with early intervention, birth through three. We then serve the school program for the kids that can't be mainstreamed or have more challenges. We provide services to about 54 children, or 52 children, sorry. And then we work with adults and then we also work with residential. A little known fact that Marta reminded me of today, because the numbers are always changing, is that through direct contracts for day services or for residential services that we contract for over 250 employees, and that's just that piece. When I look at the Opportunity Center through our employees that are direct employees, we have about 120, so almost 370, and we add subs in there, almost 400 people are employed throughout our community. Helping support individuals with disabilities live in their home, live, go to work and play in the community. So we are an active part of our community. I do, Jenny, do you want to say anything real quick?
She does.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you for this honor. We are doing lots of things to separate our mouth. We are talking our modern representatives in Columbus, having fun, but Zoom dances. And hosting a fundraiser, Marcos, the unity, and most of others. And most important, most importantly, we are having a July, July food on Sunday, chicken dinner. You need to order by March 19. How's your club? Well, build your space for the kids. And we are having a scavenger hunt that Marta will tell you about. Thanks, thanks again for let me guess, uh?
Jenny, we are proud and happy to honor and recognize you and your friends at the Opportunity Center. So the, the honor is yours this evening. And did you say that, that Marta wanted to say a few words also?
Yes.
Okay, Marta?
Oh, thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Tiffin City Council, for allowing us the pleasure of coming. I think that this is the first time we've ever had a photo with all of the councilmen and Mayor Motts. So this is really monumental. So it's really kind of special. We would have never chosen it, but we're going to make the best out of it. So as Jenny was saying, we're actually having a community-wide scavenger hunt to celebrate all of our partnerships with community members in the City of Tiffin. In lieu of what normally would be our biggest awareness event, the celebrity basketball game. So we can't have that just because last time we had it in 2019, we had almost 1,400 people in Heidelberg's gym. There's no way with all the COVID regulations that we would be able to have something like that. And so we're devising the scavenger hunt. It'll be March 8th through the 30th. It's open to everyone. We do have good prizes. Again, actually, the prizes are chamber cash and some Opportunity Center gear. So we're encouraging everybody to band together in two to five teams, people per team. And each sign or stop, there'll be 18 stops, and each sign and stop will feature a relationship and a partnership with somebody in the community. So for example, Heidelberg is a stop, and it'll feature some of the celebrity basketball game features and memories that we've had in the past. And I think that's it. Jenny, is there anything else you want to add about DD Awareness Month?
Also, yeah, uh,
What was that, Jenny? Which fundraiser? Action Club is a branch of Kiwanis for people with disabilities, and Jenny is an active, active member. We are selling candles to, that will, the proceeds will go back to Action Club, and then we'll be able to do service projects for the community.
Very nice.
If I could say one more thing real quick, I just also point out that we moved some of our services to downtown, not downtown Tiffin, but over by the shopping complex. So we are now leasing the old Optima Building in which we provide day services there with the goal of hopefully someday people will be able to walk to the storefronts and be part of that larger community in order to create greater community inclusion for our folks. So the building is in use now because of rules and regulations regarding COVID. There is pretty much stay in the building for the most part. Some folks are going out in small groups for lunch and stuff like that, but our, our plan someday is to open it up and, and really hopefully work with the city at some point. I haven't talked to the mayor about this yet, about seeing if we could get a crosswalk up there so people could cross over into some of the shopping centers. And we could help write a grant for that someday, but we are excited about that new kind of expansion or change. And the, the long-term goal is as we expand services and is growing the school program here because we have an increased need for autistic children programming, and so we're hoping to grow our school program here and move our adult day program to that building. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's really good, Lou. And of course, the city would be happy to work with you on that. Our city administrator is on here tonight. He's the chair of our Traffic Safety Committee, so he can take that to the group and have them to at least start spitballing some ideas and, and strategies on how that could possibly work and work with you all, because that's certainly what we want, increased foot traffic, but with increased foot traffic, we need to make sure they can cross the street safely. So we're happy to work with you on that. I think I saw a couple of hands go up. Councilman Perry, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say hi to Jenny.
Hi, Jenny.
Hi, Jenny, how are you? You did a great job. I had the honor to have Jenny's mom, Mrs. Berman, who I saw on the sides, as a teacher when I was in sixth grade. Hi, Mrs. Berman. So I got to meet Jenny when I was in sixth grade, known her for a long time. It's hard to be in a bad mood when you're around her. She's, uh, she's always smiling, always happy. So she did a great job tonight. Just wanted to tell her, tell her that, so.
Thank you, Jenny. The cookies are coming.
I need them.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a comment for Jenny also. I believe this is the second year in a row you've joined City Council. I think you about this time last year, you came down to City Council meeting and representing Opportunity Center. So you must be the champion for the Senate County Opportunity Center. So thank you for joining.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
She's definitely one of our leaders.
Wow.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Well, Jenny, Lou, and Marta, we really appreciate you joining us this evening. And hopefully the community takes part in the scavenger hunt and the other items that you come, have coming up on Palm Sunday and other things. And we really hope we can get back to seeing you all at the basketball game in a year from now. I think that's the idea is that everybody gets back to normalcy and we're able to cheer everyone on at that celebrity basketball game in a year from now. So thank you for joining us this evening. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support over the years, and thank you, Council.
All right, just got to switch these votes out. All right, okay. We've got that. I, I, I know I promised Council before the start of the meeting tonight that since we do have a couple of these presentations that unlike I usually tell you all that I'm going to be quick and then I'm never quick, I'm actually going to follow through with it this evening. So just a couple of items. You know, I really am saddened, as I'm sure all of you are, by the loss of Paul Alkert, our former president. So I really would like all of us to just pause and take a moment of silence. And then when we're done with that, if anyone has any Paul memories or things they want to share quickly about it. Because it really hurt to lose that man, way too young, only 73 years old due to complications from coronavirus. It just, it really hit home because Paul was, was honestly, as I had told folks, he was like a grandpa to me when I came on council. He took me and some of us, the other young guys, under his wing and, and was a real leader to us. I can even remember when I was out and about, fresh out of college, trying to buy my first house. Paul told me, didn't offer, Paul told me, he was going to go through all the tools that I was looking at because he was very handy and knew what to look for with problems. And he offered feedback and took all this time out of his day and just talked, walked with me, talked about local government and politics and just you know, such a gentle giant who's really going to be missed. So you know, Paul, I'm, I'm sure you're watching us this evening here. We just want to take a moment of silence to honor you. So if you would, please bow your heads. Thank you. We were pleased to name the trail at Oakley Park after Paul, the year when he retired from City Council. And, and we declared Paul Alkert Jr. Make a Difference Day because that was the way Paul Alkert operated his life. He always was trying to make a difference. Whether it was in the Second Ward that he represented as Second Ward Councilman or whether it was just the overall city as a whole. You know, we still, we joked around the day of the, the ceremony because along the walking trail, we put in this beautiful plaque to remember Paul. And of course, the first thing Paul was concerned about was what happens. I hope nobody trips over the plaque that's named after me. So of all the things for Paul to be concerned about the community, he was worried that someone was going to fall over the marker that named the trail after him or trip over it. And that's just the kind of guy Paul was. He was never worried about himself. It was always helping others, helping the community. So we're really going to miss him. So I don't know if anyone has anything else to add here on the spot. But yeah, Brent, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could add something, we all know Paul had so many gifts. But the one thing that I, I was always impressed with Paul is that he really knew our community. And we all live in our community. We think we know what people think, but anytime there was an issue at City Hall, I could always go to Paul and he could tell me really what the, the people of our community wanted and how they felt about an issue. And that's extremely important. And I think it's because he was such a good friend of so many people, and he listened to people. He didn't just try to tell them, you know, what city government was going to do. He listened to people, understood what they wanted, and brought that back to City Council. And so that's why I always listened to Paul because I knew he understood Tiffin very well, and that was quite a gift for city government.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a rare thing when you, I can't, I can't think of one person I have ever that has ever said a bad thing about, about Paul. Anyone that you ever talked to about him has such positive things to say about him. And, and I, like I said, never a negative thing, which is pretty huge in a town like, you know, Tiffin. I got the honor to know him a little bit in the barber shop coming in, you know, last 10 years. And one thing I will say is I've never met a man that can make my whole body shake with just how he talks. He makes a whole, you know, building rumble with that, you know, with his voice. So I know he's going to be dearly missed and you know, my, my thoughts and prayers go out to the, to the whole Alkert family, so.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Paul Alkert Jr. Was my first ever dealings with City Council about 20 years ago when he became Council President. He being my second ward councilperson knocked on my door and suggested I interview to backfill his position for a few months or years, whatever it was. So I interviewed with about three other individuals on the Democratic Party. And they were asking me leading questions, and I don't think I had any good answers at that time. And they thanked me for my time, and then they ended up backfilling with Keith Kirchner because he was a past Second Ward Councilperson. But yes, Paul Alkert was my first introduction to City Council.
I grew up knowing Paul. We were the same age. He graduated from Calvert. I graduated from Columbian, which doesn't really mean much other than we were the same age. Always had a great deal of respect for, for Paul. He was one of the most honest people I ever met in my life. If he told you he was going to do something, you could take his, you could take his word on it. One of the things, Paul had a great love for this community. And a lot, and it showed in a lot of different ways. He was a great family man. He raised, he raised a wonderful family. He came from a great family. He will be sorely missed. He, he left, he left a real legacy in this community. One of the things that, one of the things that he did, and not a lot of people, I think, appreciated this, but Paul was one of the leaders on City Council for a long time. And City Council was at the forefront of changing what I believe was the community attitude about community development, about our responsibility to the plan, to be invested. Paul was certainly invested. And I think that people listen to Paul. That was, you know, to, to Danny's point, he had that voice. He had that, he had that presence about him when he was in the room, when he sat up there on, on the chair. He was the president of council. I mean, that voice, it just, it had an impact on people. And he he was one of the people who was responsible for really, like I said, changing the direction of this community, the way it thought. People started to believe in themselves again, that lived in this community, and Paul had a lot to do with that. So I was always grateful that he was here when I was doing the economic development because he was always somebody that, that I could lean on and, and somebody I could share ideas with and get advice from. And he was, he was a good man, he's a good friend. He'll be sorely missed. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Mayor?
Oh, thanks.
Wait, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I shared this story with Nicole this morning, this afternoon on the phone, and you should be over, I was outside working one day and Paul drove past my house in a beat-up old truck with old brush. About an hour later, he came past again. I think on this fifth trip past my house isn't yours. Be no reason for him to drive past my house to go to the sewer plant. And he says, oh, he says, this helping our family. And he says, I just thought I'd help him out. He said they can't afford to hire, to have a hire done and they're not physically able enough to be able to do the job themselves. And we spoke about this.
All right.
All right.
Right, Mayor?
Thank you all for your very kind words this evening around all of that. So to keep things moving, today was obviously a very special day. If you haven't caught the headlines. David Zach at TSEP and his team and the, and members of the Regional Growth Partnership announced the City of Tiffin has our highest ever rating yet as far as major economic development projects go. The City of Tiffin finished fourth in the nation among micropolitans. There are almost 600 of these, these like-sized communities in the United States, and Tiffin finished number four in the nation. It's a testament to the great job that this administration, the City Council, the members of our economic development team, the the members of our economic development team, the chamber of commerce and the business community are doing day in and day out to improve the city of Tiffin. Um, this is now the 10th consecutive year that we've been in the top 10%. Um, and to finish number four is just absolutely incredible. Um, so we had a press conference today and, and made the big announcement. Uh, congratulations also. Uh, our deserved for Christina Murren, the mayor of Findlay, Ohio, as they finished number one. Uh, and congratulations also to Danny Sanchez, uh, the mayor in Fremont as they finished seventh. So this area of Northwest Ohio is really rocking and rolling and being very successful. So we were presented with a very nice plaque, uh, today, uh, for the, the accomplishments of the city. Uh, just incredible to be number 10. Um, the, the, the things that David and his team continue to do at TSEP. Uh, the support that you all on city council provide them and my administration with being very supportive of some of the new and, and sometimes crazy things that, uh, we present to all of you to try to better the community and to drive economic development. Um, I can't thank you all enough for being so supportive of, of all of the new programs and ideas. 2020 was a year we all definitely want to just forget about and move on from, but 2020 was actually very successful for the city of Tiffin as a whole. Um, it's backed up by the fact that we were one of the few cities uh, in this region who actually were up financially for the year. Almost every city has had a, a seven or a 10% decline on income tax revenue. We actually were up a little bit. Uh, we had a great January of this year. Uh, now February, we did take a step back. We were down in February. However, we were compared that against to a record high February of last year. So all signs continue to point to a very sound, a very steady economy here in Tiffin and Seneca County. And, uh, I can't thank David, his team, the chamber, um, and even Rich, even you, because you played a significant part in laying the groundwork for, uh, for almost a quarter of a century at, uh, what is now TSEP. But at that time was Cidec. Um, you all should really be commended, uh, because, you know, again, I had mayors come up to me today at the press conference and tell me how jealous they are that we all get along so well. We work together. We work through our problems. We don't get in embarrassing fights or name calling situations. Like if you look at, at the, the news media that a lot of city councils, uh, have all kinds of drama, we don't have that. We work together as a cohesive unit and support one another and are supportive of the new programs and ideas, um, that we have done. So, um, thank you, city council for your continued support of my administration and our economic development team. Um, very successful, uh, year yet again in 2020 for this community. Uh, you already have heard some of the announcements here in Tiffin. Uh, early this year, we've had a couple of big economic wins already. So it's exciting to know that we've started off this year on the right foot as we compete there in the governor's cup headed into 2021. Um, but it's hard to argue with the fact that if you look at Tiffin with a population of 18,000 people based off of our census, we're competing with communities of all the way up to 50,000 people. And the fact that we're able to rank number four, uh, out of all of them, uh, in, uh, close competition with folks even like Findlay. Uh, it says a lot about Tiffin. We're really punching above, above our weight class here in Tiffin, Ohio. So, um, very, very positive, good news overall for the, uh, for the community. Um, and we just had Tiffin Metal announcing their expansion, new 74,000 square foot on their facility. Uh, you heard earlier in committee, the whole, the talk of the new spec building that will be going up later. Um, we don't take our foot off the gas in Tiffin, Ohio. Uh, if anything, we accelerate even faster and harder when times get tough. And that's exactly what we did. I remember years ago fighting as a city council member when we were in the middle of a recession about a cut that was done to the economic development office. And I've always said, as long as I'm mayor, we're never going to cut funding to economic development, especially in the middle of a recession. And we've lived up to that promise and, uh, continued to pay dividends with further success after further success, uh, which has just been wonderful. So, um, but not to take away from that award, but we do have a second award that's going to be presented to the city this evening. Um, I am going to bring in, uh, Lori Brody. Lori is from the auditor of state's office here in the state of Ohio, uh, that being Keith Faber. So Lori is on her way in and while she's on her way in here to the meeting, um, I'm going to also share with you that, uh, auditor Faber, uh, sent us a very nice handwritten note. Um, said that he hopes that we're doing well here in the city and he wanted to personally thank us uh, for everything that we did with our CARES Act funding, uh, to assist local businesses here in the city of Tiffin. Um, because he understands just how important, uh, the CARES Act funding was. And that grant program being one of the largest grant programs of a city of our size in the state of Ohio, went to help countless businesses here in the city of Tiffin. So, um, very nice to have that from the auditor state, Keith Faber. Um, I'm trying to get Lori in here, but I don't see her yet. I wonder if she's having problems. Lori, can you hear us? You may have to unmute.
Hello.
Okay, this is Lori, right?
Yes, I apologize. I'm having a lot of technical difficulties tonight.
Oh, it's okay. The floor is yours, Lori. It's up to you. If you turn your camera on, you don't have to certainly. So, uh, but the floor is yours.
I'm on my phone. I apologize. My computer was acting up. So
It's okay. We've got you.
If you can hear me, I'm so sorry about that. I was working on it, but I don't know what happened here. So it let me in here on the phone though. I am just happy to be here this evening. Um, I am happy to be here on behalf of state auditor Keith Faber. And I'm here to present the city of Tiffin with the auditor of state award. And it's just so important to note that this award puts the city of Tiffin in a very select group. The auditor state's office audits about 5,900 entities and fewer than eight percent of all the entities that are audited are even eligible for this award. The outer state award is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet quite a long list of criteria for a clean audit report. And I just want to read through them so you can understand the long list here. Um, the entity must file their financial reports with the other state within 150 days of fiscal year end. You must have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings or question cost. The entity's management letter can contain no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than 10,000, lack of a timely report submission, reconciliation problems, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery less than a hundred dollars, public meetings or public records infractions. The entity shall also have no other financial concerns. So I like to read that because I think that puts it in perspective, um, what has to happen to win the award. The award also represents the hard work of all the employees who strive each day to achieve the accounting excellence. I want to recognize the mayor and the council that have done an excellent job accounting for every dollar in the city of Tiffin. I especially want to recognize Kathy Kaufman, your finance director and her staff for outstanding leadership and professionalism and especially their fiscal integrity, just a job well done by your staff there. So on behalf of the auditor of state, Keith Faber, I'd like to present this award to the city of Tiffin and just say, congratulations. We appreciate all of your hard work here at the auditor's office. And I do apologize, I'm, my zooming isn't working, so I'm not able to show it to you, but I promise to deliver it to the city of Tiffin. So they can, um, proudly display this award.
Well, Lori, thank you and, and more so even thank you, Lori, since you're the one giving us the award. But thank you to Kathy Kaufman and her staff at the finance office and all of the department heads. Because every one of them are involved, Kathy especially, but every one of the department heads are involved in all of Kathy's staff and making sure that our audit is successful. And the turnaround that Kathy has led in that finance office has been second to none. Uh, she is just a phenomenal leader in that department and continues to improve the finance office. And the fact that we're sitting here getting an aw, an award from the state of Ohio and almost 6,000 communities, uh, audited. And we're one of, of less than eight percent of those that are even eligible to get this award. And then of those that are eligible, how many actually do? Um, and, and I love that statement that you read that we have accounted for. What, what did you say? Something like each and every dollar in this budget?
Done excellent job accounting for every dollar in the city. So it's a great job by all of you. Takes a whole team of people.
It really does. So, um, thank you, Lori. Uh, thank you, Kathy. Kathy, you know, I, I feel like we should be cheering speech. You, we need to hear something from you here, but great job.
Thank you so much. Um, I am so honored to even be nominated for this award, but to actually receive it is just wonderful. Um, and I would like to thank my staff. They have worked very hard. And we truly do look for every penny and make sure that we can account for everything. And, um, really appreciate Lori coming on and, and explaining, you know, what goes into that. And it, it is a team effort. Everyone plays a part, other department heads, everyone that works with the auditors. And you really try to make sure you have everything in place for them and get everything to them that they need uh, as soon as you can. And everyone has done that. And just even, we have gone through a computer, uh, software conversion. And that was at the end of 2019 and it didn't really go the best, but then to receive this award, it is just so satisfying and just so wonderful. And we are very appreciative and thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Lori, we appreciate you joining us tonight. Um, and even more so, we appreciate how, uh, how good the auditor has been to us, uh, through keeping up with just what's going on here locally in Tiffin and, and presenting this award to, uh, to the city team for an audit well done. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me and I promised to, um, come in person next time when you win it next year. So thank you for all your hard work. Congratulations.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Yeah, Kathy, it's, uh, that's you and your staff. I mean, it, it's phenomenal because there's always a small segment that seems to, to think, you know, what, what are, what's the city doing with this money or that money? And the fact that here's the state auditor coming in and putting you through a very intense audit, full of scrutiny, looking over all sorts of things. And, and the fact that they say that we have accounted for every single dollar in the city's budget. Um, it's a testament to your commitment and to your drive to lead that office. So thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work and, and getting this auditor states award.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, um, Kathy, on behalf of the council, I also want to congratulate you and your staff. Obviously the finance department is a, um, an integral part of, uh, city government. And, um, having control of your finances is one of the most important things that we have a responsibility for. And having somebody of your quality, leading that department, plus the, the staff that you have there, gives us all a level of comfort uh, and confidence that, uh, uh, we're, we're just really grateful for, for you, for your staff. And, uh, uh, the great job that you're doing for all of us. So thank you.
Most certainly. Yep. We all echo that, I think. I, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I'm half joking, half serious. I think when Kathy goes, I may go because I don't know if I ever want to, I don't know if we want to. I don't know if I want to, uh, to, to deal with the city's budget and, and, and our millions and millions of dollars that we, we, uh, manage here at the city without Kathy's leadership in that finance office. So, um, and Kathy has been great. She's been working at, at new ways to try to integrate things. Uh, Kathy, I don't know if you want to talk for just a second that you now have e-file available for tax returns? That's a first, correct?
Yes, we actually just got it up and running for our income tax department. You can now e-file. So, um, it's been tested, it works. Uh, now we just need to quickly get some training on it so that we know how to upload the information into our system. But I'm sure we'll have that pretty soon. Very excited about that.
I think that's wonderful. That's been a request of residents for years. And now that you've taken it to the next level, that you and the finance staff to, uh, to allow people to e-file. I know one of the things that you and I have been talking about is we want to get to the point that people can pay sewer bills and invoices online. Instead of either having the auto deduct, calling in or mailing in bills, we'd love to get to the point by the end of this year also. We have the ability to pay for those invoices online as well. So just appreciate Kathy, not only just maintaining things well over there, but also looking for ways to increase customer service and our ability to work with the public. So thank you, Kathy. Your, your leadership is, is well supported over there in the finance office.
Thank you.
All right. Um, before I turn things over to our last presentation of the evening, the other item I had, I just want to congratulate Tiffin Colombian and Tiffin Calvert. Boys basketball, both of them winning sectionals. Um, a heck of an achievement. I know, uh, I think if I am correct and, and Ben Gillig would probably correct me, but did, is, was this the year that they won the most games ever in a single year, councilman? I, I, was I under the correct understanding with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they broke the school record for wins with 19. Season is still going. They'll play some Dusky on Wednesday. And it was the first league championship since the 2010, 2011 season. They shared the SBC title with, um, Norwalk and captured, as you said, the sectional championship against a very game Clyde squad on, on Friday. And they were, it was a true, they were really a, a true team to watch. Uh, you know, there's a number of excellent players, but they each, they each contributed in a number of ways. And I was really impressed how, you know, the guys on the bench that maybe didn't get to play as much, uh, really, really pushed their teammates and cheered for them. It was just, it was a joy to be a small part of the season.
Yep. It's pretty exciting, you know? I said it back when, when Colombian had their deep playoff run in football, but these are the things that the community really needs right now. We're, we're, we need good news, positive things because the last 365 days or so have been very rough on everyone with shutdowns and curfews and just bad news. And this is great. This is so great. And the fact that both of our high schools in town have been able to do this. Um, just, just exactly what the community needs right now. Um, coming out of a deep dark winter like this and the coronavirus pandemic. So it's exciting to see. Um, I know back when I was in high school and Councilman Perry was in school, uh, Tiffin Colombian was pretty darn bad at basketball. We, we, they, they struggled, but, uh, but it's nice to see things turn around and them setting a school record for victories, uh, in a year. And, and hopefully continuing that. So wonderful. Um, are there any questions for me? Cause I have Bryce Riggs in here who is doing the, uh, the chamber annual report to council. Does anyone have any questions for myself or the administration before we turn things over to Bryce? All right. Well, without further ado, Bryce Rigs, who's the executive director of the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Services. Uh, quite the mouthful. Um, Bryce is here this evening and he is going to present his annual report to city council about all of the awesome things happening, uh, at the chamber. So Bryce, the floor is yours and you probably need screen sharing ability, don't you?
I do. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, you should have it now. Go ahead and try.
Yep. And we are, okay, good. It looks like, yep, perfect. So good evening, council. Again, I'm Bryce Ricks. I'm the executive director of the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Services, as well as destination Seneca County, like the mayor said, a mouthful, but, uh, obviously not new to council, but newer in this position. Actually today I celebrated my eight month anniversary. So I don't think I can, I can no longer use the excuse, I'm new here. So, uh, we're getting to almost a year, which is kind of scary. So I just want to, this is our first report we've done for council and I think every year we'll continue to report back all the great things we have going on. We've had a lot of exciting news in the last, uh, you know, last year. And really, you know, it first happened in September of 2020, uh, the chamber surpassed our record of 358 members. We're being 359 members, which is the largest membership our organization has had in more than a decade. Of the moment, no momentum has not only, uh, increased on that standpoint, we now stand at 385 members strong today. And we really understand that the chambers is only as strong as the members that we have within it. And we're appreciative of our, you know, the intentional investments of our members. Uh, today we actually announced that we had 13 new members join our organization, uh, this month, which was actually, actually a record uh, for the most amount of members to join in one month. Um, and really this cool thing for our standpoint is these folks are calling our office. We're not outselling the chamber, but they're calling our app office and understanding on, you know, how can the chamber help our businesses? Another exciting night announcement have happened recently, uh, was the new referral rewards program that we launched last month. We've had some success already with this program. And really what it is, is that if you refer another organization to the chamber they've joined, you get $50 off your bill for the next, uh, next yearly bill that comes around. Uh, Lindsay Sui, who is pictured with Spire Advertising, uh, was our first business that, uh, that referred a member. When I joined the organization, one of my first tasks was to find When I joined the organization, one of my first tasks was to find an easy way to articulate the value of a chamber membership. Through my meetings with current members and other stakeholders, I was able to break down the value of a chamber membership into four points, education, relationships, promotions and promotions, and resources and savings. Our first point is education. At the start of the year, we rolled out a new series called Power Hour. Power Hours, professional development from our members to our members. Our next power hour is personal taxes one-on-one with Professor Thomas Marvin on March 11th at 9:00 AM. And again, we've had our first power hour occurred in January. We had over 60 attendees on Zoom. Uh, the next one was on, uh, stocks nuts in the bolts. And that was over, uh, 45 attendees. So, that's been pretty great for us. Uh, through my conversations with other small businesses, it was evident that there really was no quality personal development for employees of organizations. We partnered with KKR Consult and Kim Radisson, uh, and we've had several events with her called hashtag wisdom Wednesday. Our next event will be on April 7th at 9:00 AM. And we'll be titled A Better Normal Focusing on Results. Uh, we host these quarterly and these are open to all our members and our employees. We also rolled out a new women's leadership program, uh, through my interactions with other leaders. We found out there was often events throughout the year that celebrate women leadership. I talked about women leadership, but there really was no ongoing efforts, uh, that lasted all the, lasted the entire year. We actually sold that in our first year. And so this began as a year-long program that talks about women leadership. We had an event, uh, back in, uh, start of the pandemic with Spire Advertising. This really worked with, uh, small businesses that during the pandemic helped them shift their strategy. They may not have been on social media or engaged with social media, but really helped with small businesses determine their strategy forward. And these are often other webinars we offer. In August of last year, the chamber successfully took our longstanding educators appreciation event virtual. We were proud to welcome more than 130 attendees on Zoom to celebrate our new educators to the Seneca County community while recognizing Brian Guido, a teacher at Tiffin City Schools. One of the hardest, uh, points that we've had so far is the relationships. It's been difficult, obviously with the pandemic, but really we try to help, uh, our members connect with each other. Like many small businesses, the chamber had to pivot in the face of COVID to make the most of the situation that was at hand. The chamber always hits the course in June for our yearly chamber challenge, but as a result of pandemic, we were forced to postpone the event until September. To our delight, we had a major milestone during this year's golf outing and had actually a, a sold-out crowd in our highest attendance we've ever had for a golf outing. And we're really looking forward to bringing it back again this next year. Now, in October, we hosted our annual meeting virtually and we were pleased to present Michelle to it with Tiffin, with Tiffin City Schools, the Women's Career Excellence Award. And Larry Allesberger with PT Services, the Outstanding Citizenship Award. One of the many initiatives that the chamber oversees is the Seneca County Safety Council. Their mission is to prevent personal injury to employees and economic losses to member businesses in the community that arise from preventable health and saving incidents. Again, this was all virtual this year. So, we do a monthly, um, virtual learning with all the employers in Seneca County. We've had a great turnout for those. Whether it's using our social media platforms to promote your business or using our local billboard, the chamber really helps with our small businesses to get their word out. Ribbon cuttings have always been the bread and butter of the chamber. And we've been able to safely, safely hold ribbon cuttings with the assistance of Beth Schweitzer. This is the, uh, ribbon cutting for Sarka. And they had the 35th anniversary. So, we work with a lot of small businesses on their, you know, an opening or investment or a major, um, announcement. And again, this was the 35th year. If you use, use social media quite a bit, for example, you'll see our new member graphic on the left of Washington Street Outfitters. We never have a, you know, with our new members, we always showcase their, the business owner and their faces and who they are and their environment. Uh, and on your right is a member spotlight. We started with the Seneca News Daily. So, we feature our members every week in the Seneca News Daily and it clicks back to their website directory on our page. With the pandemic, we understand it's been hard to show people new facilities. So, this is Kate Romanca with Last Revive. We actually did a virtual tour, uh, with her facility before she opened up, actually the day she opened up. And we're getting more than 20,000 views, uh, to that virtual, um, tour that we had with her. She was able to showcase her business safely, not everyone coming in at one time. And she called me that night and was very excited that, uh, many new appointments come in. And that's the new, uh, slot across, uh, the, across from, um, from Days End. Support Seneca, uh, the chamber started with a joint initiative and partners with many other community organizations to tell this, the story of small business owners in the community. We interview, uh, small business here in Seneca County and really tell their story. It's a paid ad on both Facebook and Instagram. And then we also feature our billboard located on the corner of State Route 18 and US 24 throughout that week. The chambers also work with WBBI 967 and Fosteria to begin weekly chamber radio features on our, every month, starting in the month of February. We also meet with WTTF monthly to do, talk about everything happening with, uh, the chamber in Destination Seneca County. At the chamber, we understand that not every small business has a marketing department. So, we work close hand-to-hand with TSEP and their, and their employees and other small business owners to assist them in telling their story. That often gets them local and regional media coverage. This is again, landed dreams. And this is when they return in their new, their new business venture. The chamber can also save, uh, your business money. And this is probably our most under, underutilized service, uh, resources and savings. We rolled out exclusive partnership in 2020 with the Old Ford Banking Company to co-brand our chamber cash program that we were given a much-needed facelift on. We now have more than 140 members that accept chamber cash. In 2019, we sold $32,000 in chamber cash. And to our delight, in 2020, we sold nearly $71,000 in chamber cash. So, that's where that program was really taking off. And we've seen, uh, it continue to take off. Many offices are using it for gifts, uh, and also as gifts for, uh, friends and family. Many of our members do not realize that we have the member-to-member benefit card. This is actually something that was on our website before. You actually had to print off a, um, certificate, take in the, into the business. Uh, we've rolled this out in the last three months. It's a member-to-member card. So, we give this to our members and their employees. And right now, we actually stand with over 32 offers available to members and their employees. We've seen this jump up from probably 25 views on our, on our website a week. Now we get over 500 views. So, there's also an online piece. They scan the back of it. It takes them to the online profile. You'll see, uh, you know, like, for example, Shake Chat. It's pretty popular. Buy one, get one free chicken sandwich. Marcos has their employee discount of 20, 25% on there. Carmen says a buy one, get one free chicken wrap in, uh, which is a pretty good offer. So, we're actually working with Mayor Mottz, uh, to schedule a time to drop these cards off next few weeks to their employees in the city, as well as for city council. So, you'll get yours here soon. Our community went through a rebrand in 2018. The Chamber of Destination, Destination Seneca County changed their brand marks. We also use this as an opportunity when I got hired to really, um, change a lot of our side con, you know, a lot of our content. We work with AV, there's a marketing, Audrey Brookholder, make this happen. Every prospective member and existing member that we visit receives a folder with up-to-date information with everything happening with the chamber. One of the biggest concerns I've had since I started this role was balancing my time between the chamber and Destination Seneca County, which I'll talk about here in a second. And we were really, uh, excited about, you know, we've moved to one ask model. I'm moving into 2021. So, you know, often the chamber would ask quite a bit for funds from our small businesses to exist. So, we moved to this, this model and we just want to thank our sponsors quickly for all the support they give us. Here are platinum sponsors, our gold sponsors, silver sponsors, and bronze sponsors. And then we also, um, we're excited to have the support of the city moving to this year. I know that's something else new and that guarantees what we have a table every event that we do. So, here's a few things just to get on your calendar. I'm still working on the lunch late breakfast that we plan to have in person as well over Zoom in the end of April. So, tune, stay tuned for more information on that. Uh, but there's the golf outing we'll have every year, June 10th. And also these calendar invites out to you as well. The educators breakfast on August 12th. And then Casino Royale, which we usually have in February. We moved back to September and, um, we'll actually have an outdoor piece of that as well. So, we'll be utilizing Kennedy Falls in their reception area. The biggest surprise since I take, had, since taking on this role was really that no one had an idea of what Destination Seneca County did and that the chamber oversaw this. And all the chambers' marketing materials, you will see that we made an intentional decision to highlight Destination Seneca County and the role it has in attracting visitors to the county that in the end support our small businesses. Our sole source of income for Destination Seneca County comes from the bed tax agreement with the county commissioners. We were optimistic about the bed tax figures for Q3. And we just received the numbers for Q4 and we're really anticipate that these numbers to increase for 2021. To really anyone who visits our community, stays in a hotel, they pay a tax that gets passed on to us, uh, which helps support what we do. When I took on the role, uh, one of my main tourism priorities was to provide more transparency on how our tourism dollars were spent. We have established a tourism council, uh, from county tourism partners that provide our organization feedback on ways we can better promote our entire community. Our first meeting took place back in January and we will meet again quarterly at the end of April. As part of our brand refresher, we have made intentional investments in marketing efforts that we feel give us the most exposure for the county. May recall the billboard that was located on US 23 near Upper Sandusky. We felt that new billboard concepts better communicate the story of a growing and thriving Seneca County. And equally represents the entire county from Fosteria to the Seneca County, which is just outside of Bellevue. Our efforts on social media continue to pick up. You can find that our materials from our chamber to Destination Seneca County are all connected and fit within the brand. We have also spent a lot, a lot of time investing in digital marketing and moving away from ads. We recently partnered with Laura Lenses, a local business, small business, to begin video blogging for Destination Seneca County. Laura was out in downtown Tiffin, the, in the month of January for the Christmas walk, as well as the James Month, monthly market. And that really talked about, she interviewed the visitors that attended the event, the small businesses. And so, I think we do a really great job of highlighting events. But we really don't get a job of capturing emotions, uh, from our attendees that, that go. And so, she helped do that for us. We have also invested in marketing that we really feel hits all age ranges. Uh, many of you have recalled, uh, Suraya, who was a TikTok influencer who visited our community a few months ago. Uh, it was actually, uh, only a $500 investment. And we ended up having more than 700,000 views across all social media platforms. Uh, that was from, uh, Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, TikTok. And so, really something that, uh, we were one of the first communities in Ohio to jump on this. And I know that Mayor Mottz was a strong partner in really sharing this information and getting people engaged. You would be surprised amount of, uh, former college students who talk about their time at Tiffin and how really, uh, some of these videos brought back those times. And it was a, a really cool experience for us. Uh, and really from the feedback I've heard is, you know, really reaching out to our stakeholders. And so, we meet, uh, you know, every week almost with stakeholders that impact, uh, tourism. So, this is our hotels. These are, this is Michelle Cochran in Fosteria. Really want to make sure everyone's voice is important in the conversation and that, you know, every voice is heard. So, blog post, um, this is something that actually I worked with TSEP back in the day and an initiative that I brought to, uh, Destination Seneca County. So, it's how do you work with these tourism partners to tell their story and really get the word out. So, we worked with a lot of, you know, for example, Christmas in Seneca County was one of our first, most, uh, viewed, uh, blog posts. So, really we were the one-stop shop for all events to happen in Seneca County. You'll see the Glass Museum and Shop, the Ritz. And we worked with so many different partners. For example, we worked with Hawks Crystal to talk about, you know, they moved from, um, being more of a store format to online. So, we featured them and also gave people the link to, you know, follow through to purchase their items. We boosted this post that, you know, across the country, because they were able to engage, uh, with Hawks Crystal from all over the country. Really, uh, something that I've really enjoyed so far is that, you know, our tourism partners have, you know, expressed a, you know, desire to strengthen our visitor's guide moving forward. And then, you know, really our new guide will feature, it will release in May of 2020, will include a map of Seneca County that'll be inside, also be a larger guide and then it'll be completely redesigned. Uh, and then at the end of the day, our tourism council will have final approval what this looks like, uh, through our, you know, redesign of, of the visitor's guide. We found one thing was missing. A lot of our partners really didn't have the photography that we needed to showcase them. For example, you know, one was Renaissance of Tiffin, which we'll show here soon. Uh, and really Dave didn't have any new photos since the day he opened. So, we worked with him to establish a photo shoot that we use for marketing. We actually provided these, these files to him as well. Here's the east green. The Ritz. Rouse Story Living. 9/11, which is actually one of our most seen posts that we've had to this day. And we really talked about what that looked like and why it was built. And then the Renaissance Tiffin makes you want to have a drink right now. And then downtown Tiffin. Really one of the most exciting things to happen for our organization is bus tour traffic. I know that was a big thing, uh, with Carol Jaeger in her time. She really brought bus, bus tours into our community. And we recently partnered with Sandusky County. So, Sandusky County is one of the state leaders in terms of bus traffic. And they've really, um, learned how to do it at a high level. So, we've actually partnered with them on different things. Uh, you'll see foodie in the 419, a lot of our tours now cover that what they have to offer. So, instead of selling half-day experiences, uh, to Sandusky County and us, we actually sell full days and overnight. So, for example, we sho, we showcase the best of the best for us. And then they also showcase the best of the best for them. And we're hoping that this initiative, um, really helps us moving forward 2021, because it really out the door in terms of bus traffic. But I think you'll see, we'll see a big impact in 2022. And then lastly, um, really, I think a lot of our information, we do a good job of social media, keeping folks up to date with what we have going on with the organization. Showcasing our members, showcasing our tourism partners. So, when asked, council continues to stay up to date with us on our social media platforms. And with that, I'll open up to questions.
Councilman Perkins.
I just want to say that, uh, Bryce and his team does a fantastic job. I feel like I always know what's going on, um, with social media especially. Like, it's crazy. It's all over my feed all the time. Um, and in my face. And I know, like, at the level at work, everyone there knows. So, it, it, whatever you're doing is working. Um, so, just keep going and go hard. So, thank you.
Councilman McGilly.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, I've known Bryce for a while now. I didn't get to have him in school. And really, uh, just kind of knew him on the periphery when I was coaching football. I was the eighth grade coach his junior and senior year, but I would go to the Friday night games. And this story, I think, really represents the way Bryce is always pushing for better and giving maximum effort. The joke was always, he was our center, of course, and also played, uh, defensive tackle. And the joke was always that, uh, we would have to get a new ball every game, because Bryce's sweat would ruin two or three of the game balls over the course of the contest. And, you know, funny as that might be, that's pretty apropos for, uh, the effort that Bryce brings to all of his initiatives. You know, as a valuable member of TSEP, uh, through his involvement with various committees from his, uh, from his, uh, brief time at TU and now with the chamber, um, he's obviously played a huge role in the development of the Seneca County young professionals. And, uh, you know, people like Bryce are, are the reason why I got into city council to begin with, you know, young talent that we need to find ways to, to bring home. I know some are gonna, are gonna go and spread their wings, but if we can make Tiffin a place where, where folks want to come back to, you know, I, I think we, we're doing our job. And I really think we have a good person in place at the chamber in Destination Seneca County to help us with that mission.
Yeah, Bryce, I think that, uh, you're the right person for the job. You've got the, uh, you've got the smarts. You've got the technical expertise. I think the other thing that you have too is that you've got a love for this community and it shows. And I think that's hugely important. I, I, I just, I love the job that you're doing. I know that, uh, you'll continue to do a great job for all of us. It's important that you succeed. So, keep up the good work. Anyone else?
All right. Well, Bryce, thank you so much, uh, for presenting this evening. Uh, you guys are, are certainly rocking it down there at the chamber and keeping, uh, as we just heard this evening, everyone, uh, knows exactly what is going on. So, uh, it's very appreciative and you've been a breath of fresh air. Uh, so kudos to you and your team down there at, uh, at the chamber. So, we're excited to see what, uh, you've got in store for the remainder of this year and into the future.
Thank you all. We obviously appreciate the support we get from the city.
Okay, Mr. President. Uh, I promised I'd be short, so that concludes my, uh, report this evening. But if there are any comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Well, Mayor, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
I call you butter. Put you on a roll.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on, uh, Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for tonight for February of 2021. Total receipts for the month were $4,159,882.22. Total expenses for the month were $3,540,350.71. The general fund unencumbered balance is $2,697,635.86. The general fund unencumbered balance is two million, six hundred ninety seven thousand, six hundred thirty five dollars and eighty six cents. Income tax receipts for February twenty twenty one were seven hundred forty six thousand, one hundred dollars and forty two cents. Comparing that with February of twenty twenty, we were down one hundred thirty nine thousand, seven hundred forty two dollars and ten cents. However, annually, year to date with January and February comparing from last year, we are still up two point five six percent. The point two five percent portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund two fifteen for public streets for February twenty twenty one was ninety thousand, seven hundred thirty seven dollars and eighty nine cents. The unexpended balance for all funds is twenty eight million, two hundred eighty one thousand, three hundred fifty six dollars and twenty nine cents, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for uh Finance Director? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have one about the twenty twenty one budget. And this is from my information and I still say that community's information. But I noticed on the law director's budget, seventy three percent of the law director's budget was going for prosecution. I've been involved with city council one way or another for about two years. And I don't know if any dollars going to prosecution. And that Lori lady from the state was talking about watching each and every dollar. I know there's nothing wrong, but I'd just like a explanation on prosecution and the city law director's budget.
Law Director.
Yes, um that budget item is uh a contractual services with the Seneca County Prosecutor's Office. Starting in year uh twenty eighteen, um the the city began to contract for services that prior to that we had um actually paid directly um to employees. So instead of having um a one and a half prosecutors, meaning a full time prosecutor and a part time prosecutor, and then also a full time support staff, an office that had computers, office supplies, training, all the things that you need to employ and to um support a an office. We um we made the decision with council support to contract with for the those services with the county prosecutor's office. In doing that, in the first year, we save five thousand dollars in um legal research expense because that was an expense that um that was just absorbed by the the county. Um it also, and we had talked about when that decision was made, some extra value that is that is provided uh to the city and to the people in the community. And that being that there is multiple um um prosecutors that are available at all times that understand what's going on in the court. Because they have not only those dedicated um uh prosecutors, but also have other additional support staff and prosecutors are there to assist. They also have a a better working relationship to to handle the felony and misdemeanor cases that sometimes go back and forth. So it's been a very positive step. Um I just oversee that working with the um the county prosecutor. But the actual employees and all the day to day matters are handled by the county prosecutor's office. So I I hopefully that answers uh Councilman Jones' question.
Yes, thank you very much. Very clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Um does anyone else have any questions? Councilman Gilligan.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. No question, but uh council should have received Kathy's email at about one fourteen this afternoon. Um as such, I would like to ask for uh council's approval of the finance director's report and bank reconciliation as presented.
We have a motion to accept the uh finance director's uh um report and bank really uh reconciliation as your second. Councilman Jones.
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. President. Um I have nothing to report, um although I do have a a question and I apologize if I missed it. Uh Councilman Jones, with your uh committee on Wednesday, the materials and uh and equipment committee, is that meeting a Zoom meeting or in person? Um I may have missed uh the the location or how this could be conducted.
I I didn't clarify that, but I was hoping it'd be a Zoom meeting between the three of us and any and the mayor said he'd be glad to join in and anyone else in the public, so I was hoping to set it up via Zoom.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I I will attend that also. Thank you. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh we're now under uh, we're now under uh written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this afternoon I received mayor's request for legislation number twenty one dash five. I'm going to read it and then I will forward a copy to the council members. Um it's, dear council members, recently the city, Tiffin City Engineers Office completed a study on several traffic signals in coordination with DDL consulting engineers. From the study, various changes were recommended in order to increase safety in the community. While in completion of the study, the traffic safety committee unanimously endorsed the proposed changes and recommends council approve the actions at each intersection. At this letter, you will find the official letter of recommendation from City Administrator Dale Thornton, Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee. Members of the administration look forward to meeting with council in the near future to obtain approval of these changes.
Mayor's request, um number twenty one dash five is referred to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
Now I have Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty one dash nine to amend the two thousand twenty one budget ordinance twenty one dash eleven to appropriate funds into the Parks Department budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty one dash nine uh will be uh held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance twenty one dash nineteen has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
I apologize, I skipped over number F twenty one dash eight. Um from the Finance Director, request for Legislation Number F twenty one dash eight to amend the two thousand twenty one budget ordinance twenty one dash eleven to appropriate funds and approve a transfer. This amendment is necessary in order to reclassify a two thousand seventeen advance from the general fund to the federal urban paving grant as a transfer.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Twenty One uh F twenty one dash eight will be held on file in the clerk's office. Uh ordinance twenty one dash eighteen has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
That concludes the written communications.
Uh we're now under motions. Are there any motions? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to resolutions and ordinances.
Mr. President, did you forget to uh do public communication?
Yes, I did.
My apologies, didn't want to interrupt you.
Right in front of my big fat face. All right, we'll back up. We're now under uh oral communications. Anyone from the attending public who wishes to address city council? Um please, uh the mayor will, the mayor will tell you how to sign in, but address your comments to uh to the president of the council. Mayor?
All right, um members of the public, if you wish to uh speak to city council, there is a button. In most cases, it's located at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand. Uh alls you need to do is click that and we will then uh give you speaking ability and you can uh address city council. So now is the time to click raise hand if you'd like to speak, any of you. Looks like you have a quiet group tonight, Mr. President, that's just here to listen. So um no hands, back to you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Now we'll move ahead to motions. Are there any motions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead to resolutions and ordinances.
I have resolution number twenty one dash six introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution. I'm sorry, wait one second. I'm bringing the hat back back on this. I don't have, something happened with the printout here. Give me one second, please.
And if you'd like, I could read the title.
Oh, if you would, please. I think I'm just pointing up. Please go ahead if you have it there. Thank you.
Uh resolution number twenty one dash six introduced by uh Daniel Perry. A resolution approving the appointment by the mayor of Deborah Baker to serve a term on the Julio M. Weller Memorial Commission for the passage of this resolution until December thirty first tw- two thousand twenty five.
Thank you, law director.
Welcome. This is the first uh reading of resolution twenty one dash six. Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I'd like uh to ask for passes for uh resolution twenty one dash six.
We have a motion to pass resolution twenty one dash six. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of resolution twenty one dash six.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard? Possible. Thank you. Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Resolution twenty one dash six passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty one dash eighteen introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending the two thousand twenty one budget ordinance number twenty one dash eleven to appropriate seventy four thousand, four hundred thirty seven dollars and forty cents and approve a transfer of those funds in order to reclassify a two thousand seventeen advance from the general fund to the federal urban paving grant as a transfer and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of of ordinance twenty one dash eighteen. Councilman Gilligan.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty one dash eighteen.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule of ordinance twenty one dash eighteen and immediate passage. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gilligan.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. This was requested by the auditor. Uh Kathy, I thought, gave a phenomenal explanation during committee of the whole. But essentially, it's it's a bookkeeping correction. And um Kathy, I I hate to ask again, but would you mind kind of giving the Reader's Digest condensed version of why this is needed?
Sure. On our books, um this is a um it's not listed as in a transfer like it should be. It's an advance. And that happened because advances are supposed to be returned. And at the time that we made the advance, that was the plan. But the uh federal urban paving program costs more than what we thought it was going to. So we did not have enough money to return the advance. So we need to reclassify this on our books as a transfer because transfers do not need to be returned. And then our books will be correct.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard? Councilman Leopard? Councilman Leopard?
I think it's
Frozen?
Yes.
Thank you. Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
These suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, we will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty one dash eighteen passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending two thousand twenty one budget ordinance number twenty one dash eleven to appropriate five thousand, three hundred sixty eight dollars and fifty cents into the Parks Department budget for the east green.
This is first reading of ordinance twenty one dash nineteen. Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty one dash nineteen, please.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty uh twenty one dash nineteen. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gilligan.
Sure, uh just very briefly, this is a uh reimbursement for signage and spring cleanup um from the east green and we would just like to put this reimbursement into the parks and recreation budget as soon as possible.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes. Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
These suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, we'll now vote on the emergency.
Mr. President, there is no emergency on this one.
Oh, thank you. We'll vote on the passage.
Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Order twenty one dash nineteen passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. That concludes all the items on our agenda. Is there anything for the uh the good of the order? Law Director Howard.
Uh just a a a quick explanation because it may not be obvious. Um twenty one eighteen and twenty one nineteen, the ordinances were very similar in that they both dealt with uh an appropriation of of money. And um there is a charter section that says that an appropriation of current expenses is something that can go into effect immediately, does not need in an emergency. So you might say, well, twenty one eighteen, why did you do the emergency on that? The reason is, is that did more than appropriate funds. It transferred funds, which is a little different distinction. And because of that, I wanted to clarify the ability to have that go into effect immediately. And so that's why um you had an emergency on something that you might otherwise think is just a an appropriation of funds. So uh and that's why I know um, Mr. President, you were kind of questioning whether there should be a an emergency on twenty one nineteen because it seemed to be similar to twenty one eighteen, very understandable. But that's the 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 distinction between the two. And any questions?
Thanks for bailing me out.
No, no, you did fine. Thank you.
Are there any other cut questions, comments? All right. Well, um another good meeting. Keep up the good work. God bless all of you. Have a great rest of the week. Good night.
Thank you, too.